This time I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Planning Commission for February 22, 2023. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Zarguni.
President.
Vice Chairman Miller.
Here.
Commissioner York.
Here.
Commissioner Mendel.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza.
President.
Commissioner Munoz.
Here.
Commissioner Matali.
Here.
We have our quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, this time, does anyone would like to speak regarding any agenda item or anything pertaining to Planning Commission meeting? And now, I will close it and moving on to approval of the absences, none, and approval of the minutes on the February 8, 2023.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
If you have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to consent, public hearing discussion for item A and B.
Good evening, Commissioners, Marco Rosco, Planner Three with Development Services. I'm going to be reading into record items A and B, consent items. Item A with new plats is Nemec subdivision Block Three Lot 15A, is replatted 1.25 acres. Item Three, the cover page and the comments have been updated to clarify that plat is conditional approval pending the annexation and rezoning of, rezoning, annexation and half-street construction request for London Island Block One Lots One through Ten and Block Two Lot One. This is an OCO preliminary plat of 10.13 acres. Item number four is Starlight Estates, Unit Eight. It's a final plat of 16.54 acres. Number Five, Glen Arbor, Unit Four Block One Lot One A and One B, replatted 2.39 acres. Number Six, Naval Center Addition, Unit Two Block One Lot One, One R, replatted 0.36 acres. Next item is Barstow Addition, Block Twelve Lot One R, is a final replat of 0.63 acres. Item number eight, cover page has been updated, this is, this is of course a conditional plat approval, conditional approval pending the annexation, rezoning and half-street construction request for London Ranch Estates, Unit, it's a, it's a final plat of 87.08 acres. All plats have met the Texas Local Government Code and UDC regulations, staff recommends approval on all the plats. Continuing with the time extension. Item number nine, it is a second request for Fifth Quarter Industrial Park, this is a prelim plat of 22.88 acres. Item B, new zoning. It's a rezoning for property located at or near 581 Yorktown Boulevard. It is for David and Nicole Gerlock. It is a rezoning from the RMH Manufacturer Home District and Single Family, Sixth District to the RE Residential Estate District. Staff does recommend approval for this item as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question for staff? None, no. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding items two, two, ten. Does anyone would like to speak regarding any of these items? Two, two, ten, none. I will close the public hearing and entertain comments or motion.
I move that we approve items two through ten as presented by staff.
Aye, second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item C, number eleven, the new zoning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Andrew Dimas with Development Services, good evening to all of you. Our, one zoning case for tonight for discussion is case zero, one, two, three dash oh, four. Robert Dominguez, located in District One, the property is located at forty, forty Violet Road. The request is from the RS Six Single Family Sixth District and the RS Six Single Family Sixth District with a special permit to the general commercial district. Though if it looks familiar to you, it is, that is the original hearing for the special permit, less than a year ago. And so there's again the same site. So moving forward, the proposed use is a mini storage facility now to encompass the entire site, including the front two parcels located in the northwest area off of Violet Road. So in this time, we wanted to add a few extra slides to kind of show the character of Violet Road. I remember from the original discussion, we kind of went back and forth on how much commercial, how many commercial uses are truly on Violet Road. We know it's an arterial road, we know it's one of the original roads when the annexation occurred, not going to Highway Nine with Leopard, but how much actual commercial development exists on this portion of Violet. And as you can see on the screen, you'll see a host of yellow for single-family development. You'll see a few pinks for mobile home parks that are now considered existing non-conforming. One patch of multifamily and a few small parcels in the center of the screen that are zoned neighborhood commercial. But the true general commercial, what this site is requesting, is located at that major intersection with Leopard Street. Taking a little bit further, just so you can see, a little farther down Violet Road, again, tons of multifam, I'm sorry, single-family, a few patches of multifamily, but, but that hard commercial zoning CG2 is again located at the intersection. Of the ten notices mailed out, we did receive a few back in opposition, roughly 12.6%, almost 12.7%. Now, as you saw this exact language in the staff report, we went through kind of a breakdown of the original request and why we came to the conclusion of a special permit. Again, it's balancing the use along with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So as you can see, the site of just general commercial, so you almost have to divorce yourself of a mini storage development, focusing specifically on whether or not the actual zoning district is within the character, we feel that it is not. It is not consistent with the area development plan, it's, it's mid-block, which is one of our cardinal rules. We do not put general commercial mid-block of any section of road. It is specifically designed for those intersections. Further on, that is the very reason we came to the conclusion of the special permit the first go around. And again, without sparing the details that are all listed in the staff report, we are standing by that special permit that we originally supported as staff, that Planning Commission supported and ultimately City Council voted upon and approved. But if you have any specific questions regarding the staff report or maybe the kind of the conditions of the neighborhood itself, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any question for staff? Commissioner Miller.
Why the change of heart, or is that a question for the applicant?
That is a great question for the applicant, I'm sure he'll kind of share his story with you and some of the challenges he's encountered. But, and while we do empathize and we do understand that, you know, we're in a tough financial market right now, we do have to stand by the decisions we've made in the past and we do stand by that it was the correct decision the first go around.
And if I recall correctly, the reason why the two parcels that kind of subdivided the, the frontage were remaining RS Six was for somebody to live on-site or?
Correct.
And monitor the, the traffic in and out?
One, one person was going to inhabit one of those parcels. Again, it helped kind of, I don't want to use the word camouflage, but it helped the use blend in to where you would only see the driveway from Violet Road and you would have it be kind of hugged by two single-family homes. One parcel, I believe, was going to be for, for sale, as you mentioned, and one parcel for the family that would be running the place. And I think the owner was going to live in the back, there's a back portion that's not being touched at all, that fronts on Leonard Street.
That, that's what I remember. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question for staff? Commissioner Salazar Garza.
Okay, so let's, I know that you were saying that the, he's intentionally trying to build something in the back to live in and in the front, so how much of this is going to be the storage unit?
Exactly what you see on the screen, so this blue area that's hatched would be the mini storage. The area that's xed would be the single-family home that was originally explained to us where the owner would reside.
Okay. I know it's here somewhere, but how many acres is this? Total, the whole, the whole?
It is, let's see.
It's 3.673 acres.
Thank you.
3.67?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I was just curious to see just how many of the acres is going to be just out of the 3.6, so it's going to be what, like, I don't know, I'm guessing here a little over two for the storage unit?
That the request is for the entire, is for three points, so it's not including this RS section in the back, the 3.76 acres is what's unhatched.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? None. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding item number eleven. Does anyone would like to speak regarding that item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Rudy Garza and I live at nine oh one North Upper Broadway, just down the street. It's part of District One. And for the record, I'm not here in any kind of official capacity, I no longer serve on the council and I'm not speaking on behalf of the body that I do serve now, which is Delmar College. I'm strictly here to help Mr. Dominguez, I'm not a paid consultant of any kind of way. I'm trying to help a small businessman be able to do the project that he set out to do. Okay, as you all know, and he talked about the additional burden that the financial markets have, have changed, it's made it more difficult for him to, to borrow the money that he needs to, to be able to build those two houses, that actually makes the project more risky. He's not looking to increase the footprint of the storage, he's still looking to keeping the backside of it, which is about one point seven acres for a house that he's going to occupy. He's going to put an office in the front or for rental purposes and for access to the rentals. The two spots that he was having replatted, that was requested by the staff and also maybe recommended as, as, as a compromise by his consult, his previous consultant, makes it really difficult for him to get the financing. It's a little, it's a little different ballgame, going from a five and a half percent interest rate to about a 10 and a half percent that you're getting on commercial projects. So his lenders already told him that he'll have difficulty getting the lending approval that he needs from the, from the committee that he's going to be asking the funds for if he includes the 400,000, 350 to 400,000 that he, that he would need to build those two housing units. The housing units is all, because of the interest rates, it's also made the housing market a little softer, as those of you that are in that type of business know. And so for him to do those houses at this time is not only risky for the bank, but it's also, also riskier for him. I'm here, like I said again, I'm trying to help a small business guy. Most of the time, when you set up conditions or barriers for, say for instance, a multinational or national firm to come in here and do a project, it's easy for them to overcome those obstacles. For us small business people, it's a lot, it's a lot harder going. And so again, we understand and I, the staff's position, I can, I can, I, I can sympathize with the fact that they want to keep with, what's in keeping with the neighborhood, but quite frankly, that neighborhood's been in transition for 50 years. I mean, I used to have firework stands out there on Violet Road and County Road Forty-four. And so for a long time, there was nothing but farmhouses in that area, and so it was all farm rural. And then eventually it started to, to see some particular development in single-family lots there closer to Leopard Street. But it still is not developed in a way that the city finds to be healthy or that, say for instance, the area would like. The opposition, the opposition is still at below 20%, at 12% that he mentioned, still doesn't require the supermajority that zoning cases that are considered controversial require. And so again, I understand the reluctance to change it to commercial zoning. They talk about all the things that could be developed in terms of being commercial. This gentleman, the only experience that he has is in doing storages. He had a facility on Calicoe, he sold it thinking he was going to retire, decided that he may be a little too young, may still have a little juice left, and so he decided he wanted to go ahead and, and build another facility so he could occupy his time. If, again, if there would be a way that we could reach a compromise, we'd love the CG2 zoning. It's in our, on our arterial, most, I'm going to say most arterials in the city, including Williams, including Everhart, including Weber, those arterials that are A1 arterials or A2s, and those arterials have transitioned over the last 25, 40 years, 40 to 25 years, into businesses, commercial, local business or neighborhood business type, type of projects. That may be the case in 15 or 20 years, that may be the case for that area, that it might transition, like those areas did, into, into neighborhood commercial. And so then he would have two brand-new houses in an area that's got older houses, that's occupied largely older folks that, that may be nearing the end of their lives, that are likely to sell those houses in those lots because of the fact that the lots are large lots, into something that could start to become, begin to look like neighborhood commercial enterprises. At this point, it, again, it makes it very difficult for him to want to go into a housing venture in an area that has been in transition, is likely to continue to be in transition and keeps him from being able to do the project he needs to do. If, in your generosity, you would consider, again, we couldn't just go back and ask you to lower the requirements that were originally approved, but if you'd like to keep the, the RS Six with a, with a special permit, but allow him to put landscaping there in the front without changing the, the footprint to include any additional storages, but not have to build those two residential structures right up against, keep in mind too, that the structures would hide, completely hide his storage facility and make it difficult for him to market his, his units. So again, we're asking for some sort of leniency, some sort of generosity and possibly considering a compromise that might be able to allow him to make his project work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a question, sir?
Is there any particular, I, I think I heard you saying there that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant would be okay if the entire property was RS Six with a special permit that allowed the mini storage?
Without requiring him to build the two residential structures in the front. That's the biggest thing that's kept him from being able to move forward.
But nothing's, nothing's making him build those two houses.
It's required, it was required, it was basically the package that was turned in.
For, for the zoning, but?
To approve the special.
He didn't, there, nobody's got a gun to his head saying you must build two houses right here.
Hmm, that's not what we understood.
Yeah, I mean, he, the, the property can be rezoned, but?
My understanding is we'd have to come back to the Planning Commission and the council in order to get approval for a change in.
He just wouldn't be able to build the, the mini storages on those two small lots.
That, that's acceptable to him, the risk for him is having to, to, to procure the funds from the lender to be able to build those two houses.
But he didn't have to.
And then possibly not sell them.
Andrew, could you clarify that?
I'll refer to staff to see. Sure, I, I can provide a little clarity. The, the original zoning case did not include at all those front two parcels, it was a kind of a key shape that had the driveway and the majority of the site, the front, what is called now the front two parcels, was just property that remained under the original zoning designation it had, it wasn't touched. So it remained RS Six.
Right, but there's no written law that makes a developer build a house on a lot.
Nope. If, if you choose to have a church, a school.
He could sell those lots, he could do a number of things with those two.
Because I was under, and I could be wrong, I was under the understanding that he's going to have to plat that whole track and get, carve those two lots out so that he could build houses on them himself.
Now, that, that could be so.
Plating, plating would be a completely different story. So plating, yes, any property you own that's under five acres or that, that is adjoining, you must, of course, find a plat. But, and the, it would more than likely be those small shapes that are zoned single-family. It would lead to the idea that most folks would build single-family, but as you saw eloquently mentioned, nobody has a gun to their head.
Mr. Dominguez, maybe I, maybe I said something that wasn't accurate because I just, I just, I just relayed the information as, as I understood it. So if I did something or said something.
It was a half acre each, or 0.2 acres is what I have, 0.2 acres.
I was originally told, excuse me, my name is Robert.
Excuse me, if, I would like to make sure that if Mr. Garza's comments are finished, then I'll allow you to come back.
Okay, I just wanted to break something.
Is there anything else that you would like to kind of talk about?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Can I reserve the possibility to come back and address?
Sure. I just want to make sure that I, we hear from actual applicant for their comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, I'd like to give an opportunity because.
No problem, I understand.
I'm just relaying the information as I understood.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
For the record, you state your name and address.
Robert Dominguez, thirty-eight, twenty-two Dunstan Street in Calicoe Estates.
And if you would please keep your comments to a three minutes.
Okay, sure, okay. About the, about the homes, originally, I was told that that's the only way I could move forward, to get a special permit because I was to keep it residential-looking because of the subdivision or whatever. That's the only way I could get a, a special permit to build a storage. Going back to the banker, it says that if I build two homes in the front, it's going to be hiding the property in the back and it's going to make it kind of hard for the committee, the North Texas Bank, for the committee to accept or to approve. So I'm now looking at another banker, but still, he said if you can get rid of the homes, you know, you'd have to build them, flip them. It wasn't for me to live in any one of the front ones, I'm going to build my own home in the 1.17 acres in the Leonard side. I don't want to move the storage forward closer to Violet, I want to keep it exactly where it's at, landscape of two lots in the front, that's it.
I think you can do that with the way it's sitting.
Can staff confirm that, because there's nothing stopping you from not building those homes. You can landscape it and you just can't build commercial in those two areas.
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry, but I was told that I needed to build the homes to keep it res- residential.
No, but there is one thing that I want to clarify with Andrew. As the developer, when he goes to get a building permit for his storage facility and he's got a single-platted lot, it, currently, is it subdivided for your home site on the backside of the property?
It's only on my red, my drawing, my original drawing, which I'm going to keep 1.17 for myself on the Leonard side to build my own home in the future.
But is he required to replat the entire property into basically one, two, three, four parcels?
When, when you plat, yes. Well, I should say, there is nothing that, you can have a lot with different zoning districts upon it. If he ever comes in for a building permit to build on the portion that is zoned RS Six at, at, let's say, it gets plotted as one big lot, he comes in to pull a permit for a single-family home, we would say you really do need to subdivide to create that, that separate parcel, but there is nothing in the code that prohibits. Of course, we don't encourage folks to plot over different zoning districts, but it's, it's allowed, it's not illegal.
Right. So when he goes to permit his home, he's going to have to subdivide that acre or whatever that's, faces the street behind. Whenever he goes to build the, the storage facility, if he has no intentions of building out those two little RS Six lots, will he have to plat those as well?
Ideally, that's where I have to be very careful, to use the word "have to." I, it would be ideal to have them on separately-platted lots because that's typically how most plots are happening, but it is not a quote-unquote "requirement." Now, the back portion, of course, for that single-family home where he'll be residing, in order to get taps, the frontage on Leonard Street, that will have to be on a separately-platted lot. The, the rules are vague in the best of sense of what you have to do, but most folks will have those two out parcels separately, no different than you see shopping centers. They all have the same zoning, but they'll still have out parcels in the front for restaurants and smaller.
Is there anything else you would like to?
That's it, I just wanted to correct that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is anyone else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Well, out.
First, first of all, let me apologize if I took more than three minutes, I apologize.
No problem.
Anyway, just, just to be clear, if, if there's that portion that was originally approved, right? It's, it's like an overlay that just that portion that he's going to put the, the storages on has got the special permit. So the two lots in front, if he has no intention of using that for houses or for storages, that doesn't need to be replatted. He's just going to utilize and pull permits for the one that's got the special permit, right? Because that's the one that's actually approved.
He can use that for his landscaping or anything that he wants to do with it the way it is right now.
Okay. And so would this require, again, Mr., sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just to, so you had to be careful, it's not that I, I want to disagree with the landscaping question. There are rules and technicalities about crossing lot lines with utilities and you won't be able to get a separate irrigation permit if there's not a structure, so it gets.
But it's not, there's not a, it's not platted as separate lots, so it's all one. one property with, with multiple zonings on it, so he should be able to cross it with-
It would remain just vacant area if he chooses to never build a house upon it.
Right. If you have no intentions of ever building houses on those two lots, which it sounds like you don't, you're fine.
Andrew, can you just clarify to make sure for them, if they don't build, because a lot of these special permits, they expire if you don't use it for what it was used for. So if they don't build the house, it doesn't, it won't expire?
The special permit never applied to those out portions, those, those two parcels. It was drawn in a way to cover the driveway and then the bulk of where the mini-storage is to be built.
Okay.
So those just remained RS six.
As long as they build the storage unit and they don't build it in those front areas, they'll be fine and they'll comply with the special permit and it'll be-
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
The back lot also doesn't have the special permit attached to it, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, it's, it's just the area that, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So last question. We don't need to go any further to, to the council or anything like that for approval? This is-
Yeah, that's my question. Do we wanna ask if the applicant wants to withdraw their rezoning? Or do we vote on it?
I, I just wanna make sure that he's gonna be able to go forward with, with what we just discussed today. Andrew, you gonna support him going, moving forward?
Well, it, it is, ultimately, it's the applicant's decision if he chooses to move forward. The, the planning commission can render a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
And then that can go to city council, and you can still, you don't have to decide right now. It's, it's not like buying a car.
Yeah.
You don't have to, you can, you can still walk off a lot, but you can still decide later.
Thank you, all right. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak regarding this item? None, I will close the public hearing and entertain a further discussion.
What are we, eleven?
Eleven.
I'll make a motion that we deny the rezoning request for item eleven as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to directed report for the planning commission. Do we have any directed report?
No report.
Any future agenda item? None, so at this time, I will adjourn the planning commission and convene to the beach and dune committee. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman.
Yes.
Just one quick announcement. We do have the Bayside Area Development Plan open house tomorrow from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the, at Hamlin Middle School, or five-thirty to seven, I believe. Five-thirty. I won't be there unfortunately because I have a prior commitment, but just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate you bringing it up. Ruth, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Zarguni?
Present.
Vice Chairman Miller?
Here.
Commissioner York?
Here.
Commissioner Mendel?
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Motahy?
Yeah.
We have a quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak regarding any of the public item agenda or any item regarding the beach committee? None, I will close it. No approval for absences, and moving on to the approval of the beach and dune committee minutes for June twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. Have a-
Discussion or further? I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the public hearing discussion and possible action for item D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, Andrew Demus of Development Services with our one case for the evening. It is a, a combination of a beachfront construction certificate and an erosion response plan for one oh-six Bikini Drive. The case is twenty-two BD ten twenty-seven, Robert and Melissa McManus, and the property's located at one oh-six Bikini. As you can see on the screen, this is on Mustang Island. Now, why, why are we here? What is a beachfront construction certificate and what is an erosion response plan? For most of you, this may be your first and at most second time this body's actually convened. So again, why are we here? So in the world of construction, in beachfront construction, or beachfront construction certificate land, what is that? It means that if you are within a thousand feet or the first parallel road on Mustang Island seaward to the Gulf of Mexico, you must obtain a beachfront construction certificate. That is where we evaluate whether or not the construction may potentially negatively impact access to the beach. If everybody remembers the number of years ago, the Protect Our Beaches Act and having free access. So part of that, protecting that access, is that we investigate as part of this construction certificate whether or not that's somehow impeded. Whenever you get closer to the beach, as you progress towards what's called the line of vegetation, so on your screen, you have the green line that meanders right along that line of seagrass that can shift a little bit, but as you get closer to that line of vegetation, you of course are impacting sand dunes. Part of the BCC and in combination with Oasis County, who handles the dune protection permit, and the general land office, who will comment on all of these processes, we coalesce all those comments into one package and we bring it before you. The red line you'll see on the screen is what's called the erosion setback line. That means if you're within three hundred and fifty feet of that green line of vegetation, it means you have to demonstrate that you've made every attempt to stay as landward as possible away from the sand dunes and use impervia, or perviable materials, meaning reduce the amount of impervious surface as much as possible. That accounts for foundations, that accounts for driveways, swimming pools, all those things come into play to reduce the amount of impervious surface. That, of course, helps with stormwater and, of course, preservation of the sand dunes. The next level is what's called the two-hundred-foot erosion line. That is almost the no-man zone. You cannot build or you have to try to minimize to every possible extreme to not encroach into that two-hundred-foot area. Fortunately, in this case, no encroachment is occurring into that two-hundred-foot area. It is all staying landward of the line, and as we go through the case, here are a couple of snippets from the actual construction plans to prove that, yes, it is absolutely outside of that two-hundred-foot protection line. Yes, it is still within the three hundred and fifty erosion response area. That is why they must agree to minimize all impervious materials as much as possible. Here are a few elevations. Of course, in most of these scenarios, you have a non-habitable first floor with garages and flood vents because of FEMA flood standards, and your upper two stories are the actual habitation itself. And here are a few photos of the subject property, so you can just get an idea. Now, required findings comes right out of both the UDC and the municipal code, which again states that we have to take comments from the general land office and evaluate whether or not we see any potential dangers or hazards to dunes. In this case, we did not, and I'll kinda spare you going through each one of these steps. Now, additional requirements, as I mentioned, it has to meet the FEMA flood standards for base flood elevations. It has to be two feet above what we call the freeboard requirement. I'm sure you've heard that in many discussion here and there. Talks about enclosures, and that is where you have to install flood vents and hydrology, meaning that is what's addressing minimization of impervious surfaces. Now, of the twenty-one notices sent out, we, we did receive three in opposition. One interesting thing about the opposition letters, the way the notice is set up, it looks almost identical to a zoning notification. So all of the responses from the three letters were, "We don't want multifamily uses in our neighborhood." The zoning is RMAT, which is a multifamily zoning. But by no means is this discussion at all touching the zoning. That is remaining, nothing is changing, these are all single-family homes. The board in this capacity, as the beach dune committee, couldn't change land use even if they wanted to. That would have to go through your other hat as planning commission. But nevertheless, this is only addressing construction of a single-family home. No multifamily uses are even being remotely proposed. Now, all that being said, after we reviewed the submittal, comments from the GLO, correspondence with the dune protection permit that is also being handled by the, by Oasis County, we as staff are recommending approval of the beachfront construction certificate and the erosion response permit. And if you have any questions, be more than happy to address them.
Commissioner Miller.
Is the only reason why this is coming to us is because a portion of the lot is within the two-hundred-foot erosion?
Yeah, the three-fifty line and the two-hundred, we have to verify it's not encroaching in the two-hundred, but that three-fifty line is what triggers an erosion response permit.
Okay, so if, if it was four lots in landward, then it wouldn't even come to this body?
It would only have a BCC, which we would handle administratively.
Okay.
Correct.
That was my only question. And we've also, we've seen cases in the past where people wanted to put pools, construct swimming pools, so if the applicant wanted to construct a swimming pool at a later date, pass this line, then it would come back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, that's my questions.
Thank you. Any other question for staff? None, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding this item. Does anyone would like to speak about this item? None, I will close the public hearing and entertain the further discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve item thirteen as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to directed report?
No report.
No, and any future agenda item? None. So at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting and convene to the airport zoning meeting. If I could have a roll call, please.
Chairman Zarguni?
Present.
Vice Chairman Miller?
Here.
Commissioner York?
Here.
Commissioner Mendel?
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Motahy?
Here.
We have a quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to public comments, is there anyone that would like to speak regarding any agenda or any item regarding the airport zoning commission? None, I will close that, and moving on to approval of the absences for Commissioner Mendel for October nineteen, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion, we approve the absences for Commissioner Mendel.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to approval of the airport zoning commission meeting for October nineteen, two thousand twenty-two.
I'm over there, we approve the minutes from the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
For a second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the City of Corpus Christi International Airport presentation. Item number fifteen.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kevin Smith. I'm the director for Corpus Christi International Airport. Nice to be here, thanks for the invitation. If we can go to the next slide, or do I have control over that? Yeah, perfect. So hopefully y'all are familiar with the airport, but just a quick overview. A hundred and forty thousand square foot building, built in two thousand two. We do have three national airlines, obviously Southwest, United, and American, seven rental car agency. Southwest Airlines just opened a cargo facility on the west end of the terminal, and they've been accepting cargo for about the last seven months now. We also have eighty-six full-time employees, there's six hundred total badge holders on airport property, and our operating budget is about eleven point five million dollars with a seventy million dollar five-year capital program. A lot of people don't know, we have a full U.S. Customs and Border Protection on the lower level of the terminal. It is also built to withstand a cap five hurricane, so if you guys need a safe place to come during hurricane season, the airport's not a bad spot to be at. We can handle two hundred passengers per hour, which is on par with any of the major airports. We've looked at a lot of different options for this space, and we've been showing it to carriers that did not realize we had this available. So it's, it's a great space, it's just not very well-known about. This is our economic impact for two thousand eighteen. We're getting ready to do a master plan that will update this information, but as you can see, the, the activities from our airport is about seven hundred and eighty-two million dollars with a total employment of eight thousand six hundred ninety-three. So it's a, a pretty substantial player in the community, and we need to make sure we protect our investment there. So some of the things that's happening, we just completed our Vision twenty-twenty-six strategic plan. We shared that actually with our board today, and it looks at basically our, our next three years, what we wanna accomplish at the airport, and a lot, a lot of it has to do with facility improvement, cost reduction, and just making the airport a, a more sustainable asset. Highway forty-four complex, we are issuing an RFP for a gas station right on the corner of Highway forty-four and International Drive, so rental car customers can stop and get gas and not have to pay that nine dollars a gallon that rental car companies charge you. Also, it will include a hotel next to that gas station. As soon as we know who the operator is for the gas station, we'll issue the RFP for the hotel. Looking at some other options for that frontage road, everything from pet boarding to dry cleaners to, things you think about when you need to leave town and come back to town, what do you need, right? And then the other thing, our concessions contract, we have issued an RFP. We have three bidders that we're gonna be interviewing in March, and they have partnered, almost all of them have partnered with local community partners, Nuasis Brewing, Made-in-Corpus Christi, Driftwood Coffee, Salty Oak Barbecue. So there's a lot of community. We made it very clear that if they don't bring part of the community into the airport, that they probably don't stand a very good chance of winning the bid, so we've had some really, really good participation from that. So hopefully, we'll have a new restaurant, gift shop, looking at Amazon Just Walk Out, if you've ever seen those. Basically, just you scan your palm and go in, shop with whatever you want, and when you leave, it charges your virtual cart, so it's kinda fun. We also started a Fly Local First campaign. It's been going now for about a year. We have about fifty companies, fifty-two companies signed up, and it represents about thirteen thousand business employees that will promise to fly out of Corpus Christi International Airport. The, the reason that's important is that's kinda the last piece of the puzzle the airlines are looking for. We have about eleven hundred people a day that live in the Corpus Christi area that fly out of our airport, but we have fifteen hundred Corpus Christians driving to other airports to fly somewhere else. And the airlines just don't believe that they can recapture that market, they think they've already lost them. So we're trying to convince them otherwise, but it's, it takes a lot, so. I talked about our strategic plan. There's the economic development we talked about with the, the new hotel and light retail out on the Highway forty-four. Cost reduction is very important because the airlines look at our cost per employment. How much is it gonna cost me to put a person on an airplane? And right now, we're at about thirteen dollars and fifty cents, which is extremely high for an airport our size. A lot of that has to do with the, the debt that, that the airport's incurred over the years. About, gosh, I don't know, about eight years ago, there was a decoupling of the runway project. I don't know if any of y'all heard about that, but that was very expensive for the airport to do, even though the FAA funded some of it, as well as building the brand-new terminal in twenty twenty-two, or two thousand two, we're still paying off some of those bonds, so we've gotta get a lot of our debt behind us, get some things paid off. Our current agreement that we're proposing to the airlines will set their cost per employment at ten dollars and fifty cents. And so we started taking chunks away, not only just reducing our costs, but improving our revenue streams, right? There were, when, when I got here, three, almost three years ago now, we weren't charging any Uber and Lyft, they were picking up for free, even though the cab companies were still paying. So we've plugged that hole. There were a lot of leases that had escalation clauses in it, two percent a year, three percent a year, and nobody had been implementing those charges, so we've rectified that. The only, the only air carriers that were paying a landing fee when I got here were The only, the only air carriers that were paying a landing fee when I got here were the commercial airlines. And so all the private pilots over 7,000 pounds, even if they're carrying cargo, they aren't paying landing fees at our airport. So we implemented what's called a vector system. It's a little antenna that goes out on the airfield, and it tracks every aircraft that lands, gets their landed weight. Anything over 6,001 pounds gets a bill sent to them automatically to the owner of that aircraft, and they have 90 days to submit payment to vector, and then they send us 90% of that money. So it's a, it's a golden opportunity to plug some revenue holes. We're making, going to make about $15,000 a month on that, so, you know, add that up, and it certainly helps reduce that cost. We also brought parking in-house. When I got here, we had a third party running our parking lot, and we were paying them about $14,000 a month to operate the parking lot, and we're doing it now for about $6,000 a month, and we're breaking all kinds of parking revenue records, which is great. And hopefully it's a better product. So that's just a quick overview, kind of what's going on, just wanted to let you guys know what's happening at the airport. Certainly open to any questions, and if you guys have any comments or feedback for the airport, I'd love to, love to hear them.
Commissioner Miller.
You need a Whataburger. Everybody that I grew up with that comes home to visit Corpus Christi, the first thing they get to town that they want is a Whataburger.
Yeah.
And...
I hear you.
Filling that terminal with the smell of grilled onions, AKA Whataburger BO.
The old airport used to have a Whataburger.
It did.
And actually, I was, I was going to ask you about that. So before they built this one, has five or six, however many terminals, the old one, from what I remember, many, many years ago, was huge. Do you have any idea how many terminals that one had, or how many gates?
From what I remember, there were only, I think, four gates in the old terminal.
Really?
From what I saw.
No, there was more.
Were there more than that?
Yeah, Corpus, the, Corpus Christi International Airport is the only airport that I know of that remodeled to get smaller.
Yeah, it was huge.
Because it was, in fact, in those times, an international airport. But when the major oil companies left in the, in the 80s, mid 80s, that's kind of when all, when everything came crashing down at the airport.
I don't know, maybe the drawings I saw were right before they built the new terminal or something, because the drawings I saw, I think, only had four gates, so.
Yeah, there was at least 10 gates, and they were all...
Wow, yeah. They had upstairs, downstairs, it was a lot.
No security checkpoints.[1689.34]